Graham, are you ready?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, the regular board meeting of the Albemarle County School Board is in session. Mr. Page.
I move that the board certify by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorize the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Second. Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Carlson.
Yes.
Dr. Acuff.
Yes.
Mr. Kohlzar.
Yes.
Mr. Page.
Yes.
Mr. Biaki.
Aye.
Mr. Alcaro.
Yes.
So if we could rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could just take a moment of silence, please. Okay, our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion?
I move we approve the agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The approval of the agenda passes. Before I go too far on, two things I'd like to do. One is a microphone check. Ross, would you start us off?
Ross Holden, School Board Attorney.
Jason Buakia, Ravenna District.
Graham Page, Samuel Miller District.
Steve Kohlzar, Scottsville District.
Jono Alcaro, At-Large.
Kaye Acuff, Jack Jewitt District.
Katrina Carlson, Ryo District.
Claire Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent.
Matt Hawes.
I'm sorry. Matt Hawes, Superintendent.
Deborah Collins, Deputy Superintendent.
Rosalyn Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer.
Renea Hairston, Assistant Superintendent.
Okay, thank you, everybody. And just a reminder that this is our second meeting with live video streaming going on. There's a camera behind us and a camera in the back, and so it went well quite well the first time. We're looking forward to this being successful from this point on. Our next order of business is the approval of the consent agenda.
Move we approve the consent agenda?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The approval of the consent agenda has passed. The next item is spotlight on education. Mr. Page.
Good evening. Next week, two of our students will be traveling to Phoenix, Arizona for the Intel International Science and Engineering Fair. They will be joining their colleagues from 75 different countries, regions, and territories in showcasing the most advanced scientific research conducted by high school students this year. Two of our students earned their way into this highly select group by capturing Best in Show awards this year in the Piedmont Regional Science Fair. And all Albemarle County Public Schools students received 55 awards at the regional fair, including 11, think about it, 11 of the first 15, of the 15 first place awards in the senior category. And when I get to the names of these two projects, it might be a little bit tongue-tying, so I'll need probably some understanding with that. Our first student is Paula Jewel of Albemarle High School who won Best in Show for this project. 3D spatio-temporal profiling of antrianergic and cholinergic transmission. And if that's wrong, then she'll tell us when she comes up. Paula will translate for us in a few minutes, but I think this has something to do with the brain research with implications for how to treat such conditions as Alzheimer's. With Paula is Libby Terrell from Western Albemarle High School. Libby's Best in Show award was for a study on whether low carbohydrate diets improved cardiovascular health. She found contrary to what many people believe, that added sugars influence health much more does than intake of fat. Her volunteers lost weight and improved their cholesterol numbers over a six-week period compared to a control group. I'd like to ask Paula and Libby to join us at the podium to tell us a little bit more about their research, and even more important, how their findings could contribute to the future quality of life for people across the globe. So Paula and Libby, please come forward.
No, you were right beginning.
Yeah, in front.
It's confusing.
Right. Sorry, the directions weren't clear.
Hello?
And please pull it down.
What?
Pull the microphone down, so it's easier.
You can just, like this?
Yes, that's perfect.
Okay. All right, so I guess I'll tell you about my project first. So the title is 3D spatio-temporal profiling of adrenergic and cholinergic transmission. So in the brain, there are, we have these cells called neurons, and these neurons will communicate with each other, and the way they communicate with each other is responsible for every single thought, feeling, action, everything that is going on with your mental processes because of a specific communication circuit within your brain. And so my research specifically has to do with two of these major kind of neuron circuits. The first one, the adrenergic system, it has to do with the release of norepinephrine, and this has to do with arousal and kind of attentional effort. And then the second system that I studied is the cholinergic system, which has to do with acetylcholine release. And acetylcholine in the brain is responsible for kind of cue detection, kind of fast attentional goals, and also with like learning and memory. And this is why, for example, a lot of disorders actually have to do with the dysregulation of these two neurotransmitter systems. For example, a big one is Alzheimer's. That's about 55.5 million people, I think, per year, and that, what happens in Alzheimer's is they actually, the brain ends up releasing not enough acetylcholine. And because acetylcholine is so crucial for attention, for memory, for learning, the people with Alzheimer's, because they don't release enough acetylcholine, the neurons for that circuit can't communicate to each other effectively. So that's why you get this cognitive decline. And then likewise, for, some people have depression. One of the factors or causes of depression is because of low norepinephrine release, and so they don't, they're not quite, they don't have enough alertness to be able to do kind of day-to-day tasks. And so previously, it was very hard to see when neurons were communicating to each other because this is very, very small, and when they communicate to each other, it's very, very fast, often on the scale of milliseconds, right? And so you can't actually, it's very hard to actually see that in real time and how, when, where, that kind of stuff, about where they're actually releasing these signaling molecules, these neurotransmitters to each other. And so for the last three years or so, I have been helping out in this lab that actually developed these neurotransmitter sensors. And so these sensors will light up in the presence of these neurotransmitters, which means that now you can actually detect the presence of neurotransmitters. And so what I did was I actually used, I kind of took advantage of my access to these neurotransmitter sensors, and I'm the first person to actually analyze on both a temporal and spatial scale of when neurons actually release these neurotransmitters. And I found a lot of very interesting properties. For example, I can find, one of the things that previously we didn't even know at all is that the way they release is very precise. Instead of one neuron releasing to, you know, a very large area on a neuron, on the postsynaptic or receiving neuron, it's actually very precise over maybe one micrometer or so. And this has a lot of implications for pharmacotherapies. For example, the primary first-line treatment for Alzheimer's, and currently the only FDA-approved treatment for Alzheimer's is anticholinesterases. And so this stops the degradation of extracellular acetylcholine. What this does is it raises the acetylcholine concentration everywhere. But according to my results, in normal physiology, this is not what happens. It's actually released very, in a spatially restricted manner. So by increasing it everywhere, yeah, it might help a little bit, but this is not the most effective drug target. Instead, I think if we focused on a more presynaptic drug target, you might get better results. And yeah, my results kind of have to do with all these different properties that previously were impossible to find, so it's interesting.
Wow.
Mr. Kohlzar, will you extend that to me later? That's absolutely fascinating.
What was your animal model?
I wanted to do, obviously, neurotransmitters are very highly organized, highly integrated phenomenon, so I did mice studies because I want it to be in vivo, as real as possible. I don't want to do cell culture, you know, a lot of high schools typically do cell culture, it gets easier, but I chose mice, even though it was much harder, took many more trials to get good results because I want it to be real-time, in vivo, what actually happens.
What was your measure, how did you measure the cholinesterase?
Oh, good question. So the neurotransmitter sensors work by an increase in fluorescence, right? So I actually developed my own MATLAB program that will analyze this fluorescence percent change across a cell and over time.
In a living mouse, or you have to?
Yes.
Okay. I used to do research on mice, too, but.
Do you plan on expanding your work, or?
Yeah, so I'm actually currently doing some pharmacological testing, for example, with anticholinesterases to see those effects. And also, I'm also kind of doing it on non-neuronal cells. I want to see, is central transmission different from peripheral transmission? For example, acetylcholine is also released on your adrenal medulla, or in your neuromuscular junction, it might be different, might be more spatially or less spatially restricted, it might be faster, it might have facilitation or depression properties that we don't know of yet.
I have a comment and a question. One, I think you've done a fabulous job of explaining your project. You have a real, well, one, enthusiasm, but two, talent for making that understandable. So, I don't know, does just a great job. There's a lot of time where I, a lot of times where I hear recaps of something and it's kind of all lost on me, but you made it very understandable. And then my follow-up question is, you might have said it, so where do you, it's UVA, is a lab or something like?
Yes. So I worked first, I worked with Dr. Yulun Lee, he works in Pekey University, and then, so I kind of started it there, and then I kind of, well, after the summer, I have to go to school, so then I did that analysis back home.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Paul.
All right, so I know that the, I guess, main purpose of me talking to you is to explain my research project, but I was also wondering, do you guys possibly, would it be okay if I had some, I guess, public comments? Just from, just possibly suggestions?
To sign up for it, yes. When the public comment comes, we'd love to have you speak.
So I'm, okay, but am I allowed to like?
Just a few minutes.
It's just in a few minutes.
The next item on the, on the agenda.
Agenda is, is public comment.
But I didn't sign up for the public comment.
You can sign up right now.
Okay, so I can't say that like during this part, I guess?
Yeah, I would love to be able to say yes, but public comment is public comment, and we can, we can get you signed up first to come up, okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Libby, and I did my project on the effect of a low carbohydrate diet on cardiovascular disease risk factors, so doesn't sound quite as fancy as Paula's, but.
But every one of us up here is like, in town.
Yeah, I know. So my scientific interest is definitely nutrition, and specifically the biochemical level of metabolism. And so that's where I started my research, because of course, the advice for so many years has been that a low-fat diet is best for cardiovascular disease, preventing cardiovascular disease. But as I started researching on the molecular level, I came to believe that actually a low carbohydrate diet could be better for cardiovascular disease risk through improving insulin sensitivity. So as I mentioned, I did a lot of this research on the molecular level, and so for the science fair, I really wanted to take that idea back up to the human level. So I did a clinical trial, and I got 17 teachers in my school to participate, which was great and kind of difficult to do, but I randomized 12 to an experimental group and five to a control group, and what I measured was their BMI/weight and their blood triglycerides before and after a one-month experimental period in which the experimental group changed to a low carb diet. And what I found was that according, like, the low carb diet actually did improve cardiovascular disease risk factors, so it decreased the participants' BMI by an average of around seven pounds, and it also decreased their triglycerides, which is similar to cholesterol, it's another type of fat in your blood. And this, of course, indicates that a low carb diet has a potential use for preventing cardiovascular disease health, and obviously, this is much different than what we've been told for so many years. And with this project, I just want to encourage scientific questioning, not believing the dogma, and I feel happy that I can bring a new look into nutrition from looking at it from that molecular level, and I enjoyed like following the scientific process of forming a hypothesis and then bringing it up to the human level and testing the validity of that hypothesis, and I'm glad that my experiment worked, and I'm very fortunate to be able to go to the International Science Fair.
Tell me about the, why it was tough working with the teachers.
So they were all lovely people, let me just say. What was tough was I asked essentially every teacher in my school, everyone that I saw in the hallway, I asked them, I'm pretty sure they started like talking about me, like, watch out for that girl in the school with the clipboard, she's going to ask you to do a diet. But I got a lot of no's. I probably got 50 no's for the diet, for doing the experiment. Of course, that's understandable because it's a big commitment, so I was really lucky that so many people helped me out. All the participants were so great, and I'm really grateful.
Who did you partner with to get the triglyceride reading? I mean, you didn't draw the blood.
No, yes. So that's actually an interesting part of my project. I originally knew that I wanted to do weight, but I wanted also to do, to measure a risk factor that was more specific to cardiovascular disease. And so I thought about doing blood pressure, but that's too variable, and I thought that triglycerides would be impossible to do because it takes blood, it takes expensive measuring tools, but I ended up reaching out to a company who manufactures lipid measuring devices for doctors, and they ended up lending me one of these devices for free, which was awesome. And.
You can say their names.
Oh, it was PTS Diagnostics. And so I had the nurse help me do the finger stick, and so I didn't like manage any blood, but I was so grateful for all the time she put into that, and I'm lucky to have all these people to support me.
What was the average weight loss in your study group?
So it was around seven pounds. I'm not sure the exact number, but more interestingly than that is I did a linear regression to find the associations of which factors affected which outcomes, and I found that both calories and carbohydrates affected weight. So as you decrease your caloric intake, your weight goes down unsurprisingly, but also as you decreased your carbohydrate intake, your weight went down.
Wow. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Very, very much.
Thank you.
Would you come up? We'd love to shake your hand.
Oh, sure.
Great job.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Exciting. Great, sophisticated. Thank you. Great job. How about comment over there?
Yeah.
Oh, do you have a cup? Okay, next up is announcements. Dr. Hawes?
I don't have any, did you? We don't have any announcements.
Okay. Any announcements by school board members? Okay, next up is public comment.
We invite and actively seek the public's input in the matters relevant to school board governance and provide for time in our meetings to hear from our residents and community members. Respectful and on-topic comments are expected during public comment. Willful disruption of the meeting may result in being asked to leave by the chair. Public testimony guidelines are, speakers should adhere to the following protocol. At the speaker's podium, please state your name and address or voting district. Please give any written statements and other supporting materials to the clerk for distribution. Please note that written statements are made a part of the permitted records of the school board. If the speaker is unable to complete the presentation in the time allotted, a copy of their supporting materials will be provided to school board members. Three minutes will be allowed for each presenter to speak. A color-coded light system will be used to time presentations. The yellow light means that the speaker is two minutes into the presentation, and the red light means the speaker is at the three-minute limit of the presentation and must wrap up promptly. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the school board request no clapping, booing, or any other form of support or non-support be used. If members of the public wish to show their support for a speaker, they may stand or raise their hands. Debate and dialogue with the school board is not allowed during public comment. Tonight, we have six speakers, and the first three, Brandon Karamanis, Ellie Lewis, and Paula Jewel. So Brandon, please come forward.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Brandon Karamanis, and I live in the Samuel Miller District. I represent a group of five students from Monticello High School who, over the past year, have studied the issue of overcrowding in the county school system as part of our citizen action project. During the course of our research, we discovered that the county has, in fact, issued a plan to solve this problem, and we have identified a few key issues with their plan. Throughout a long process of interviews, we discovered that the county's solution to overcrowding in the school system revolves around the construction of centers for specialized learning and is heavily influenced by the comprehensive high school initiative. However, we are greatly concerned with the specifics of the plan, largely due to the vague and differing explanations we heard from various experts. Superintendent Matt Hawes stated that attendance to these satellite centers would be mandatory, while Mr. Jeff Priliman, the specialty center planner, said that the intent was for especially motivated students to have access to more course offerings. This is an extremely important detail, and it does not reflect too well on the county's plan that two of its highest-ranking administrators do not agree on it. Making the specialty centers mandatory would do more to reduce overcrowding, as more students would be removed from their home schools, but it raises questions about whether high school sophomores are ready to make important career choices. Non-mandatory centers would not put the same pressure on students, but are also not guaranteed to reduce overcrowding. Additionally, no concrete plans for course offerings, schedules, or anything of the sort were offered to us, and a plan to model transportation after K-Tech appears to be extremely inefficient. Overall, we are worried that the county values the idealistic vision of career centers over the logistical value of the plan. The fact that the county's defense of its plan rests primarily on its educational rather than logistical value casts doubt on whether solving overcrowding is actually a primary intent of comprehensive high school. Instead, it seems to be an afterthought to justify the county's focus on career-based learning. Please do not misconstrue our concern for disapproval of the entire plan. We are certainly proud to live in such a progressive and innovative school system. However, we were told by Ms. Rosalyn Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer, that overcrowding is the county's current number-one priority, and this focus is not reflected in the plan. We have heard that the first two satellite centers would cost $41 million to construct. This is no small amount of money, and we kindly urge you to more fully flesh out the logistical details of the plan before acting on it, as the current problem of overcrowding should take precedence over more experimental and admittedly inessential policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karamanis. Ms. Lewis, Ellie Lewis.
Hi. So I'm Ellie Lewis, and I live in the Ravenna District. I'm a student at Monticello High School, and I'm representing my group for the culmination of our citizen action project.
Excuse me, could you just pull the microphone down to you a little bit? Thank you.
So we're presenting to propose changes to the Albemarle County Public Schools Health II classes, as we believe that students are currently not receiving adequate education regarding drug and alcohol use. We believe that the unit on drug and alcohol use leaves students grossly unprepared for a future in which they have the potential to consume these substances. The teenage years are a critical period for brain development. Nine out of 10 people who abuse or are addicted to nicotine, alcohol, and other drugs begin using these substances before the age of 18. Knowing this, it would be a serious disservice to these students if we continue to allow them to have interactions with drugs and alcohol without effectively educating them about their many dangers. Primarily, we would like to suggest that the alcohol and drug unit in the curriculum for Health II be lengthened. The current curriculum has such a strong emphasis on driver's ed that the substance abuse unit gets very little attention. Even teachers who exceed every requirement for the curriculum feel as though it's impossible to fully cover the remainder of the course. In regards to the alcohol and drug unit, Pam Bradley, a health teacher at Monticello High School, said, "We don't have enough time in the semester to really do it justice. It's like we're hitting the highlights of it." She believes that after health classes, students are still unprepared to face the dangers of addictive substances. We also believe that the curriculum should be updated to cover a larger range of substances. Teens are not using the same substances that they were 10 years ago, yet drugs such as jewels and e-cigarettes that impact current students the most are barely covered in Health II. Addiction researcher Sean Sembuch says, "Many teens who start out using drugs such as vapes and jewels are the ones who end up getting addicted to more serious drugs later in life." The curriculum needs to be more applicable to teens in order to prevent future harm by preparing them for the current world, not just the popular drugs of the past. So furthermore, we believe that the Health II curriculum should be presented in a way that is engaging to teens. In current health classrooms, students are taught the information through statistically-heavy reading in the textbook and outdated film. Even if the messages of these materials are still accurate, the methods for delivery do not accentuate the importance of the content, and students can easily disregard it. Instead, students need information that they can connect with. This could be achieved by bringing in guest speakers such as counselors and recovering addicts, or by fully utilizing modern-day technology through simulations and interactive modules. By engaging with the material, students will learn the seriousness of the topics that they are facing. And drug, oh, okay. We hope that you will consider taking action to better the Health II classes for Albemarle County students, giving them the tools that they deserve to withstand the perils of modern-day substance abuse. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Paula Jewel.
Hi again.
Hi again.
Okay, so my background is in the neuroscience of learning and memory, but as a neuroscience, I also, as a neuroscientist, I also read a lot of, I guess, psychology, psychology studies, and moreover, as a high school student, I get to see real-time learning and memory. So as, I guess, kind of a high-achieving high school student, I'm very aware of who makes up my classes. And one thing that I've realized as I've gone through the public education system is, I guess, how static the levels in the education system are. And what I mean by that is, if you look at the people who start out in standard or advanced or honors classes, they're typically the same exact people in standard, advanced, and I guess the honors become AP in high school. And so there's very little movement between these levels. And what's even more troubling about that is if you actually look at the people who make up those classes, you'll see there's really big disparity in the type of people. And what I mean by that is, people in lower-level classes typically tend to be minority or low-income students, and this shouldn't be happening because it's not, no one is inherently, I guess, less capable of learning the material. I've learned the high school curriculum. It's not impossible for anyone to learn AP classes, to take AP classes or to pass them, and yet continuously, in every single grade level, in every single class that I've been in, I've seen, it's very consistent. There's very rarely, you will very rarely ever see people in that kind of low-income or minority group ever be able to rise up. and I guess the honors become AP in high school. And so there's very little movement between these levels. And what's even more troubling about that is, if you actually look at the people who make up those classes, you'll see there's really big disparity in the type of people. And what I mean by that is, people in lower-level classes typically tend to be minority or low-income students. And this shouldn't be happening, because it's not, no one is inherently, I guess, less capable of learning the material. I've learned the high school curriculum. It's not impossible for anyone to learn AP classes, to take AP classes, or to pass them, and yet continuously, in every single grade level, in every single class that I've been in, I've seen, it's very consistent. There's very rarely, you will very rarely ever see people in that kind of low-income or minority group ever be able to rise up or ever be able to jump levels. It's very rare for a standard-level student to, what is, okay, to go to a higher level. And I believe, just from my experiences, the reason for this is not actually that surprising, because, sure, teachers, they can teach you stuff, and that's great. They can give you just an overview of what the classroom material is, but a teacher can't give you the kind of one-on-one attention that a parent can. And I'm in Mesa, so I am friends with a lot of very high-achieving students, and there's a lot of key themes that I've found between us and, I guess, differences between us and lower-achieving students. And one of the key things is that lower-achieving students, they don't have the same type of parental interaction as we do. And that makes sense, because if you're a low-income parent who has, you know, a really intensive or stressful job, then you can't take the time to actually give that kind of full attention to your kid. That, for example, my parents, they spent a lot, my parents spent a lot of time preparing me for all my classes and specifically giving me, like, academic confidence. They taught me multiplication before I actually learned it in school. They took me to science symposiums, which is how I met the professor that I actually got into lab with. A low-income parent, they can't do that, because they have to focus on getting food on the table and that kind of stuff.
Ms. Towne, we have to ask you to wrap up.
Okay, I guess what I'm saying is, I think, because it's impossible, obviously, for a teacher, you have to, obviously, your budget is limited, so you can't pay teachers to give one-on-one tutoring or that kind of attention to those low-achieving students. But I know at Mesa, there's a lot of kids who really know the curriculum very well. So I guess I'm just asking if it would ever be possible for some kind of tutoring program or some kind of thing where a high-achieving student such as from Mesa could teach the low-achieving student what it means to have that kind of one-on-one teaching, where you don't move on to the next concept unless you sure...
Yeah, you have to. Thank you now. Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next three speakers, Jenna Palmer, Megan Craddock, and John Edward Hall. Mr. Hall, you'll be last.
Oh.
Okay, in that order.
Hope you'll...
So Ms. Palmer first.
... give her time, like the young lady there.
Good evening. My name is Jenna Palmer. I live in the Scottsville District. I teach at Greer Elementary School. As each of you are aware, after-school care is critically important to many families. When care cannot be found, either because the space is unavailable or the cost is too high, parents make other plans for their families. Some parents adjust their work hours, or work from home, or take their children with them after school. Unfortunately, those solutions are not possible for everyone. One of the groups of workers who cannot flex their hours are teachers. I'm speaking to you tonight as an Alamo County teacher and as a mom. This is my 10th year teaching at Greer Elementary School. My daughter will start kindergarten at Cale Elementary next year. So my alarm is set for 5:45 this Saturday morning, so I can try to sign her up for EDEP when registration opens at 6:00 a.m. Even if I were to bring her to Greer, she would need aftercare. My workday never ends when the bell rings. And I'm not the only teacher caught in that trap. Maria, a teacher at Baker Butler, did not get a spot for her first grader at her own school last year. She worried about her six-year-old being unsupervised in the classroom while she went to faculty meetings, attended conferences, and planned. Eventually, she secured a nanny, and she's trying again for a spot this year, or next year. A Western Alamo High School teacher with a son at Bradas Wood faces the reality that she cannot be a full-time employee and meet the needs of her family if her son does not get a spot in EDEP, because there aren't many other options in her location. We are just a couple teachers, out of many, wondering why in such a wonderful school system we are stressed and worried about after-school care. We urge that the school board work with the Board of Supervisors to expand aftercare opportunities for all families. The current proposal to build a new facility near Alamo High School is a good example of an expansion opportunity to help everyone. We also ask the board to consider an EDEP registration process that honors the importance of teachers in our school system and recognizes that teachers do not have flexibility in their work schedules. Perhaps a specified number of EDEP spaces at each school could be offered to county teachers before the general registration window opens. This would be truly meaningful support that wouldn't cost the county, or DEP, or EDEP a penny. Thank you for listening to us this evening, and thank you for the work you do for the children of Alamo County.
Thank you, Ms. Palmer. Ms. Craddock.
Hello, my name is, can you hear me? My name's Megan Craddock, and I'm a teacher at Greer Elementary, and I live in the White Hall District. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me this evening. My story is a lot like Jenna's. I've been teaching at Greer for six years. I love my job, and I love my school. Next year, my daughter will be starting kindergarten at Brownsville Elementary. Last week, we learned that Brownsville is one of the lucky schools to be using the lottery system for EDEP. My daughter being admitted or not admitted could determine whether I'm able to return to my current position at Greer next year. I've always been told, "Be the first to sign up, and you'll get in." Now, unlike many of my county employee peers, I'm at a disadvantage in an already limited pool. I'm here to ask you to please consider EDEP registration prioritization that takes into account the unique work limitations that are faced by county teachers and employees. As you know, after-school care is critically important to many families in Alamo County, including mine. The county EDP program is a wonderful program, but it does not and cannot ensure that all families have access to quality, affordable after-school care. To address this, many parents can change their work schedules and adjust their lifestyles. For example, many employees can change their work hours, telecommute, or bring their children to work. These options are not available to a classroom teacher. For that reason, I'm asking you to please consider offering EDP registration priority that takes into account the unique work limitations that are faced by county teachers. I certainly don't want to have families in Alamo County lose after-school care that they've secured in the past, but I would hope that there is a way to give teachers with their unique work limitations priority when EDEP registration opens. I'm aware the county covers insurance for families where both parents work for the county. I also understand the county has recently lowered tuition rates for children of county employees who live outside the county and want their children to attend county schools. Unlike those benefits, offering EDP priority to county teachers would not cost the county anything. We're not asking for a discount, and it would allow schools to keep teachers that want to be at their schools. It would allow the supervision of kids that are left unsupervised during after-school meetings, which I hear is a very site-based decision and results in different scenarios all across the county. I want to pay for after-school care. I want to stay at Greer. My last point is, the time is to act now. This question has been asked to the EDEP Department, the Teacher Advisory Committee for years, and it keeps being told it's being looked into. Let's look into it tonight and support employees who love working in their classrooms every day. Thank you for your time and for all you do for our children.
Thank you, Mrs. Craddock. Mr. Hall. Mr. Hall?
A teacher, I'm also a doctor. I'm titling my little talk here, Equity in K-Tech, K-12, Alamo County Leadership. My name is John Edward Hall, and I live in the 5th District here. I live in the city also. I am here this evening to complain about my treatment at the hands of Dr. Daphne Kaiser, Director of K-Tech, and Dr. Matt Haas, Superintendent of Alamo County Public Schools. Dr. Kaiser was very cordial and polite at our first meeting. I had met the culinary arts chef, who was enthusiastic about working with me to convert their food bus from gas or diesel-fuel generation to solar power. At that time, Dr. Kaiser and I met briefly, and she invited me to prepare a report for her review on enhancing the course curriculum at K-Tech. I have six U.S. patents, three U.S. copyrights. I'm an author, done medical publications. In early February, I returned to K-Tech, was not allowed inside. I said I would be back around 3:30 with the finished report, which I put about five hours into after studying their full curriculum. Daphne Kaiser met me. When I returned, there stood Daphne Kaiser and a police officer to greet me. They took the report, gave me a copy, and said I would be subject to a no-trespassing department. What a switch! I said that Dean Tistat, Chief Operating Officer under Pam Rand's administration, had lifted no-trespassing orders on the K-12 Alamo County schools against me. Matt Haas does not dispute this. Today, at 10:00 minutes to 6:00 p.m., Dr. Matt Haas met with me and entered judgment on me about what he said was dangerous past behavior toward Alamo County schoolchildren. He did not elaborate. It is my opinion that Dr. Haas, Dr. Kaiser are playing at being what I call little G-God, oppressing me, insulting my intelligence. Matt Haas' Daphne Kaiser's little tyranny and despotism. I read that K-Tech heads only stay about three years. So what is the truth about Daphne Kaiser? Is it the Peter Principle? I just wanted to serve by my business successes and achievements and their guidance. I have never been harmed. I have never physically harmed any student or teacher in the Alamo County school system. Small men like Matt Haas are jealous of power, and therefore misuse it. The same goes for Daphne Kaiser. When they are jealous and treat their fellow mankind with spite, condescension, hatred, as they despise them, they will be judged for this by the highest judge, God almighty. And in rare instances, when civilians are attacked by such as them during life in a court of law here on earth...
Mr. Hall...
... they are found guilty...
Mr. Hall, you've had 45 extra seconds. That was the amount of time that Paula Joel was allowed.
I had a lot to say, sir.
Thank you.
So...
That ends public comment. Okay. Thank you. Next up is Super School Board and Superintendent Business, Dr. Haas.
I just had a couple notes from some workout in the schools last week and this week. Monday, I just wanted to spend the day working in one of the school cafeterias. So I went out to Stony Point first thing in the morning, and I was working with Kim Eubanks and Nuasha Gentry. Those are the cafeteria staff at Stony Point. I learned a lot about our cafeteria operations and spent the day doing all the things that they did and having a great time with them. Also had a chance to work with Gary Courtney, who's the head custodian. And throughout the day, I had the opportunity to serve lunches to all the students in the schools and was complimented many times on my, the meatball sandwiches that I was serving the students. So they enjoyed those. And I'm really proud of our cafeteria staff. I think they do outstanding work, and they're really wonderful with the students that we have as educators. I also want to talk a little bit about the excellent drama presentation that was at Alamo High School last weekend, the Cinderella musical. It was Rodgers and Hammerstein's version, so it was a little bit different, a little more ironic, and a lot of fun to attend. The kids did a fantastic job with it. And on Saturday morning, had the opportunity with Dr. Kaiser and Trevor Henry from local government to attend a ceremony here in Lane Auditorium called "Our Community Salutes." And during that ceremony, 65 local teenagers and young adults took their oath to serve our country as Marines, airmen, soldiers, and sailors. It was really a wonderful event, and I'm really glad I had the opportunity to attend This, just Wednesday morning, had the opportunity to attend a signing ceremony. And a lot of us, when we think about signing ceremonies, we think about the ones that we hold annually at the high schools for athletes that are signing to commit to be college athletes. This one was a little bit different. This was a different kind of ceremony. It was at 7:30 a.m. at K-Tech on Wednesday. I hope to see more and more of these, not just at K-Tech, but at all of our schools and centers. During this event, K-Tech students were recognized as they announced their career plans and signed letters of intent to job offers, apprenticeships, or advanced technical training. The following students choosing a career as a professional in their respective trades were honored. Liam Bibb with Bibb Construction, Christopher Meadows with Spruce It Up Construction, Luke Page with Page Construction, George Rogers with Kavanaugh Cabinets, James Watkins with Tiger Fuel, Justin Woody with Lam Electric, Adrian Rojas with Design Electric, Ellie Shaner with Overhead Doors of Charlottesville, and Jacob Shaner with Pro Link Incorporated. I really want to congratulate all these students. I'm very proud of them, and I know their parents are excited for them, especially because they receive scholarships to continue learning their trades while they are employed. So I know parents are excited about that. Earlier this week, I made a visit to the Blue Ridge Area Food Bank with Christine Thompson, our fundraising mastermind, and leaders from the Transportation Department, Kim Woods and Jordan Lewis, and we presented the Director of Development there, Millie Winstead, with $3,300 that our employees raised by each contributing a dollar or more and wearing their jeans earlier in April on a Friday. When we brought the money, Millie said, "That's over 13,000 meals." She also provided us with a tour of the food bank, and I learned a lot about the program that I never knew before. For example, there are only seven food banks in Virginia, and each one has many partners. Ours has over 200 partners that include programs like backpack programs located in many of our schools. Millie praised the work that our schools do to support students and their families in need. Let's see, the last thing I want to say is that coming up this weekend, starting tonight and going in through Sunday, Monticello High School Drama will be presenting a musical called "Once on This Island." And it's a charity event that is, funds their drama scholarship fund, and also Habitat for Humanity in Southwood. So, thank you.
Any board member reports?
Yep, I'm reporting for Kate and I. I don't know if y'all remember, but a while ago, we were tasked with, like, a little committee about how we can improve outreach, and we had our first event today. The goal we decided to go for, and it was an idea from Mr. Honeycutt at Monticello, is to come to the schools and just have an informal get-together with teachers. And so we spent, it was budgeted for two hours, and we ended up spending three hours, and teachers were in and talking and wanting to share stuff with us. It was absolutely wonderful. I would encourage other board members to sign up. I think we're going to try to get, thanks to Jennifer, try to get into every high school before the end of this school year, and hopefully next year, we can get into even more schools. Anything to add, Kate?
No, it was, it helped bringing coffee and muffins, but it was a very, a very productive conversation. I mean, we saw Murray High School and got a lot of candid, you know, had a lot of candid conversations with the teacher. I highly recommend it.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, both.
John, as a quick reminder, just so that we stick with the process in the future, recapping the public comment. We did not do that tonight, and I think it's past time, but...
Thank you. Next up is our Learning Technology Integrator, and it's presented by Dr. Diggs.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Diggs, Chief Technology Officer. We're happy to be here with you this evening to share information about the work our Learning and Technology Integrators do. This graphic that we're about to show you represents four years of summaries of the work that our Learning Technology Integrators have done within our schools. We thought it would be helpful to show you how the Learning Technology Integrators align within our department. They're one of four critical teams, as you can see here. They're one of four critical teams, as you can see here, that helps support our 21st Century learning environment. The LTIs serve as a critical bridge between our more technical and data-oriented staff and our teachers and students. Our LTIs are able to speak to both worlds in a very effective way. Now Jean Osborne is going to share with you how the LTIs do this important and very much needed work.
Hello. Thank you all for the opportunity to be here and to share with you the work of the learning technology integrators. My name is Jean Osborne, and I'm the Assistant Director for Technology Integration. I'm incredibly proud of the work we've done this year to promote digital citizenship. And I'm also incredibly proud of the team's ability to support the tools needed to increase equity and access. These tools require training, and the learning technology integrators are able to be embedded in the classroom and provide this training. So I'm incredibly proud of that. It's been exciting to see the team grow over the last four years, and I do want to take this opportunity to express my appreciation to both the cabinet as well as the school board. So thank you for your support. The learning technology integrators are a strong team, and they support school, all of our schools, including the Center for Learning and Growth, Post-High, as well as Center One. In addition, the LTIs provide important support to other ACPS programs such as our ESOL program as well as our administrative staff. This model of embedded support manifests itself in multiple ways, some of which you see up here on the screen. Tonight, I've prepared for you an overview of the work that we do each day to support our teachers and students, and I'll discuss specifically our learning engagement goal framework, as well as a new, somewhat unique strategy intended to increase our visibility, our visibility throughout schools, as well as increase the number of teacher interactions. Each member of the learning technology team works with our school principals and identifies a school-specific digital citizenship strategy. In additions, in addition to these digital citizenship strategies, principals identify the role that technology will play in helping them reach their school improvement plan goals. The collaborative meeting between the learning technology team and our school principals is anchored in the learning engagement goal framework. This framework is truly designed to align our efforts and our work in our school with our strategic goals as a division, as well as that principal's North Star as the instructional leader of their building. Currently, the LTIs support 61 learning engagement goals, and these are really, in some regards, technology smart goals, just a way for us to really make sure that we're measuring and maintaining progress towards these, the school improvement plan. Many of these goals also support equity, literacy, as well as amplify student voices with technology. LTIs also support principals with learning resource vetting, and the introduction of any new technology requires, it always requires a deep dive into the terms of service as well as the privacy policy associated with that new learning resource. So though the learning technology integrators, the primary focus is to work side-by-side teachers and provide the coaching support that they need to integrate technology. These, these LTIs, these integrators also have the time to look at these tools and make sure that they undergo the vetting that's required to make sure that they are of the highest quality. This year, the LTIs were encouraged to walk their schools, and this was a strategy designed to really ensure the visibility of our learning technology integrators. Each day, the LTIs report through a daily time capture, and on this daily time capture, they were asked to report out the number of steps that they took each day in our buildings. As a wellness initiative, they were actually invited to report the steps they took before they showed up to work. And the number that you see up here is a culmination of all of those steps. We decided to gamify this strategy, and what we introduced was an award that the team would get for every 1,000,000 steps. So after 1,000,000 steps were repeated, reported on the time capture, the, our schools earned what we call a swarm. Now swarm's a bit of a unique term, and here you'll see LTIs providing what is really a form of professional development. So a swarm represents a, an opportunity for all of the learning technology team to come to a building and to provide the type of embedded support that may be needed. Our LTI Charlie Nolan worked closely with school staff to schedule and organize this robust PD. This event led also to many collaborative planning meetings and co-teaching with the teachers who attended this PD. So the swarm doesn't stop at that after-school event, as you see here. It can kickstart some of the learning that is central to the work of the learning technology LTIs also measure the number of interactions that they have with teachers each day on this same daily time capture, and we define a teacher interaction as one that leads to student outcomes supported by technology. And as you can see, we're well ahead of where we were last year, our daily interactions with teachers. Paired with these interactions, LTIs support teachers in using a theoretical framework titled SAMR. And this theoretical framework helps teachers plan for the effective use of learning technology in the classroom. I'm incredibly, as you know, proud of this team, and I could go on explaining all the different ways that we support learning, but we decided it would be best to hear from one of our principals. So with that, we've invited Kristin Williams to share her work with both the learning technology team and her school's work with their LTI. So I'd like to welcome Kristin to the podium.
Good evening. I'm Kristin Williams, Principal at Stone Robinson Elementary, and I was really pleased to be asked to be here tonight to join in this conversation because I firmly believe in the power of coaching, which is what I see our integration partners as, is another form of coaching in our schools. And I, I can share firsthand tonight some really concrete examples of how that partnership has really been integral to a lot of the success we're having at Stone Robinson. So for the past three years, our integration partner has been Willie Kelstrom. He's phenomenal. So if you hear me say Willie, that's who I'm referring to, and I know that he's part of a greater team. And I will say, aside from Willie, who's in our school on a daily basis, and I can attest to the number of steps he's taken, the entire lead team is really, has been, I reach out to them all the time for lots of different types of support. They're always there, readily available to, to help in our school, and I'm, for that, I'm very appreciative. With regards to Willie, Willie supports not only the teachers, but the students, the greater community, and myself as a principal. Some examples of how he has supported teachers in our school most recently was the rollout of the iPads in K-1 classrooms. What, what he does as a partner is he comes to me as a principal, and he'll, he gets in front of it, which I so appreciate because there's so much coming at us very quickly. And he'll come in and he'll say, "Kristin, this is happening right now. This is going to be coming forth to your teachers. How can I support that?" And so together, we can get in front of that with the teachers in a meaningful way because they're, they're overwhelmed oftentimes too, right? With the number of things coming at them on, on a daily basis. The iPads, Willie came in, met with each team individually, talked to them about how, ways in which they could meaningfully implement it, and made sure everything was in place before we just sort of put them into classrooms. He then came in and sat with every student in our K-1 classrooms and, and made sure they knew how to hold it properly and use it safely, and modeled for teachers how to get started with that new tool in our school. He meets with my library, my library media specialist every other week, and I didn't even know that until recently, when the two of them came to me with some ideas. He does things in our school. He's there every day. Sometimes I don't even know that he's there, and then when I sit down and I ask him, "So what's going on with some of the work that you're doing?", I'm blown away by some of his examples. One, professional learning was one of the, the things you mentioned. And last year, we had some money to invest through our PTO, and they wanted to invest in some technology. And we were talking about some of the virtual reality tools, and it was something that I knew I didn't want to put in front of teachers unless they knew, again, how to meaningfully use it. So Willie developed a professional learning opportunity for the staff, came out one Thursday afternoon, taught them about Google Expeditions, and, and so collectively, we made that decision to then purchase this resource because they knew ahead of time that they were going to be able to use it to connect the curriculum with their students. There's other, many other examples. He helped to co-develop and teach an after-school robotics club for our students. He support, he supports teachers in teaching reading and building background experiences using technology for, for kids. He's supporting my interventionists in, in an Audubon project, building birdhouses and using drones to help our school become an Audubon school. As a principal this year, we're implementing the Language Arts new report card. And I, I reached out to Willie and I said, "I really need a way to communicate this with parents." He helped to me to create a live video that we could post to the school's website to communicate anything that a parent would need to know to understand that report card The biggest thing I would say that the team has done for us this year is our school was really wanting to create and implement a K-5 digital citizenship curriculum. They, I put a team of teachers around it during the summer, and the lead, both Willie and Jean, actually came out to support the teachers this summer, put the frame in place, and they have been able to successfully implement that program school-wide this year for us. One of the things we did was we actually rewrote a kid-friendly version of the acceptable use policy. We realized that was out there, and kids and parents don't necessarily understand what it all means. That has made a huge impact on our school this year. So I, I, you know, the last thing I will say is just the networking piece. Like the instructional coaches, he has networked our school well beyond the walls of Stone Robinson. Some examples of, of the work that he's done with even an individual student, a fourth grade young woman who was struggling socially and emotionally, but she's passionate about music. He overheard her telling the nurse about her passion for music. He connected her with someone over at the Center One, one of our high school students over there recording music, and the two of them recorded, wrote and recorded a song together. And now they're working together to do their second song. And so we got permission from the parent, and we were able to transport her over there and establish that relationship. Most recently, we had a Monticello High School shop teacher come out and work with some of our fifth grade students who were working on a genius project to, they wanted to create their own baseball bats. This teacher gave up his planning time, came over to Stone Robinson, brought all the tools, and these boys have a lifetime memory there. So, you know, in closing, I just want to say, I really appreciate your investment and, and coaches, and LTI integration partners are exactly that, and that entire, the entire team has been incredibly supportive to me, to my teachers, and to my school community as a whole. So thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions that I can answer for you all?
Any questions for Jean?
How many LTIs do we have, and, and, and how are they distributed? A, it sounds, I mean, from Ms. Williams, they've developed an extraordinary relationship with the LTI at their school, so.
Yeah, so we have 14 LTIs, so we are at SOQ. It was last year that we added nine FTE to the, to the, to the role and moved, we moved to 14.
So we have 25 schools and 14 LTIs.
Yeah, so there's approximately one LTI per 1,000 students.
Right.
And some LTIs support.
Even I can do that math pretty quickly.
Yeah. So the LTIs support in elementary multiple schools. We have one LTI for each of our high schools, and at the middle school level, one LTI will support two of our schools.
And, and how do the LTIs interact with the instructional coaches?
Yeah, so this year, it's been, it's been an exciting year for us to join through PLCs. We have joint PLCs that we attend. I've been working closely with the lead coaches. We have reading that we're doing. We've adopted a text, Aguilar's Art of Coaching. And also, I think it's important for us to reframe the way in which we perceive our work. So it's important to me that we always, we walk into a classroom and we share the efforts, the struggle, the hustle of our teachers, rather than maybe walking in as technology advisors, giving ideas, and then walking out with the teacher's list having expanded, and us walking away with no responsibility or no skin in the game with regard to that classroom. I, we've made sure that we've shifted our mindset with regard to those teacher collaborations as well.
I'm sorry. One more question. How much is the PD curriculum over the summer? Does it, how much of that includes some of this?
Yeah, so this year, this, this summer, the learning technology integrators will be supporting our Schoology PD, which is, Schoology is the new learning management system that we'll be implementing in the fall. So teachers will have a required three hours of Schoology PD, so the learning technologies will support both that as well as our Coder Dojo Summer Coding Camp.
One thing, the thing I would add is that a part of that, the connection that we're making between coaches and LTIs is that the team that's going to support the new LMS will be teachers, instructional coaches, and LTIs together as a group to start making sure that that bond is very tight. And Jean's very, been very pivotal in that, that work.
Thank you, Debbie. And I'd like to add that also that us being shoulder to shoulder with the coaches really does represent one team for our teachers in our schools, so they see a broad set of supports, and that may include an LTI as well as a coach entering a classroom together and then addressing the instructional and the technology needs as, as a, as a team within that classroom.
I wanted to give a shout out to Alfred, Mr. Tool. I, he was part of the breakfast we had this morning, and he did a great job describing his role. He gave an excellent example. Teachers are interested in doing stop motion, and he's helping them figure out the technology they can use to do that. So since he's here, I just wanted to say, you did a great job representing, representing what you do.
I've gotten stopped in the grocery store before by teachers asking us to keep certain LTIs at certain schools, and I've gotten some unsolicited emails about Alfred, to say the least, so.
Great. Dr. Diggs, Mr. Osborne, thank you both very, very much. Next up is Student Services Update. Dr. King. And thank you too, Ms. Williams.
Good afternoon, board members. All right. Good afternoon, board members again. Glad to be here with you this evening. Particularly excited to be able to share with you about really two issues this evening. The first, we'll talk about anonymous alerts in Alamo County Public Schools. As you will all remember, I would spend a good deal of this year focusing on identifying and putting into place an anonymous student reporting app for Alamo County Public Schools. We did that work through the RFP process, and I'm excited to announce this evening that that process, we, through that process, we chose the Anonymous Alerts Reporting System. Anonymous Alerts is currently being used in more than 5,000 American schools. Beginning in August of 2019, the Anonymous Alert App will be available to all ACPS students, staff, and community members. The app and the service is available, will be available to our community members 24 hours a day and seven days a week. Folks will be able to access the app first through a button that will be placed on the district website. Folks will also, students will also be able to access the reporting system through a web portal, which will be available to them, also linked to the website. And of course, the primary access point will be an actual app that students can download to their mobile devices. And by mobile devices, we do mean all mobile devices, including phones, iPods, and the like. We're excited that Western Alamo volunteered and has initiated a pilot of this program. That pilot began on this Monday, May 6, 2019. And so Anonymous Alerts Reporting App is live and operating for Western Alamo even as we speak this evening. as we speak this evening. So as we work through the process, one thing I would note is that, one of the reasons that I think Anonymous Alert was successful in terms of their bid is the fact that this app is so customizable for us. We really have the ability to set this app up in the way that we feel like will serve our needs best. So one of the first things that we had to determine in terms of how we would use this app is kind of what our alert notification scheme would be. And so this is kind of where we landed. So what happens is every alert that is entered for a specific school will be shared with that school's administrative group. Alerts that involve mental health-related issues and bullying issues will be routed also to the counselor group for that specific school. And then alerts that involve incidents that could impact the entire school division will be also routed to a group of staff members at the central office. And I'll explain a little bit more about that in just a moment. What you'll see here are the kinds of incident types and locations that we've established. So if you have an opportunity to go into the app, you'll note that students can specify alerts about each of the items on the left: bullying, cyberbullying, drugs or alcohol on campus, racial intimidation or harassment, safety concerns, sexual harassment or assault, suicidal thoughts, threats, guns and weapons on campus, threats, and others in which students can specify. And as you'll note, students are also able to specify the location within the school that a particular incident that they have concern about actually took place. So what is the School Administrative Reporting Group? Okay, the first group that all of our alerts are going to go to. This group includes the principals and the assistant principals at each school. So for instance, if an alert were to come through for Stone Robinson, that alert would immediately go to the principal and the assistant principal at Stone Robinson Elementary School. The group will be notified for all alerts for their school, and administrators in this group will receive notifications by email at their K-12 Albemarle email, and also they receive a text message at their division-issued cellphone. So they receive those alerts in two different ways, providing a level of redundancy in terms of notification. The next group that we specified is the counselor group. This group will include school counselors, and this is one of the places where the program will be customizable. Administrators will be able to determine how many of their counselors receive alerts. If they wish for all of their counselors to receive those alerts, that will be an option for them. If they wish for certain counselors to receive those alerts, they can also decide to have the program set up that way at their particular school. Now, these individuals will receive notifications via email, obviously because they do not have school-issued cellphones, and the group will receive specific notifications about bullying, cyberbullying, and suicidal thoughts and threats. The final reporting group is the central office reporting group. That group will, will include myself, folks like Dr. Haas, Dr. Co, Ms. Collins. This group will receive notifications, at this point, only about notifications that involve guns and weapons on school grounds, and we will receive those notifications through email. It's important to note, though, that in that particular instance, the school principal would still have also received that notification. So alerting us to that kind of incident really is a level of redundancy, and the purpose of that is because that is the kind of issue that we will need to immediately render aid to the school in order to address. Here you have a focus, a photo of, and I'm not going to go to it just for the interest of time, of what the web portal looks like. As you can see, you know, you have several pull-down menus. If we were on that portal, what you would see this evening is, you can go in and under selector, submitter type, you identify kind of what your role is as a part of the school. You identify the school that you're working in, and then you identify the location that the event took place in. You then have an opportunity to write a narrative about what happened. A student then submits that portion of the report. What happens at that point is the individual has an opportunity to make a decision. The individual can decide that they wish to make the alert at that point anonymously, or they can identify themselves if they so choose. More importantly, they also have the opportunity to open up a live communication link with an administrator. So the person could be reporting an incident, they can maintain their anonymity, and they can actually open up a live communication link with the administrator so that they can have a back-and-forth conversation about what has happened, all without revealing their own identity if they would like to do that. What's also important to note is on the other end, the work that the administrator does, there is an opportunity for the administrator to also reach back out to the individual. Say, they get a report, and they're in the process of working through that report, and they feel like they have a question about something that was shared, they can reach out to that person directly through the app and, again, try to create that communication avenue for, for that person. All of that, again, is done through a process that allows the individual making the report to remain anonymous if they so desire. I'll, I'll stop here and offer an opportunity for questions about the Anonymous Alerts piece, if you'd like.
Questions?
I have one, Nick. Is, I'm hoping the answer is no, but in the four days that it's been live at Western, have there been any submissions?
There have been. A, a, a good many. So one of the things that I would, that I would remind you is that one of the things that we learned when we went out and talked to school divisions locally who are using apps is that one of the things that they warned us what happened was that when we first rolled this out, it'd be kind of like a shiny new toy, and there would be young folks who made some unfortunate decisions about the use of it. We've seen some of that. So we've seen some, some students clearly using the app to report probably incidents that aren't real. But we've also received some really important notifications, some concerns from students as well as some concerns from parents that the administrative team has been able to work through relatively quickly. Other questions?
I, I know you said that the, the reporting could be anonymous, but will you know whether it's a student or a parent, or will you know anything about so-called anonymous?
Yes. The...
Fileings?
Yeah, I, I better not try to go back. Wait a minute, I might be able to do it, okay. So if you look here, if you click here, and if it were live, under submitter type, a person can indicate whether they're a student, a parent, a staff member, or whatever, or just community member. And again, an administrator, if they were interested in that information, they could open up that live communication portal and, and ask that question directly.
I presume this has the ability to generate statistics?
It does indeed. In fact, to generate a significant number of reports about what has been reported, the outcomes of those reports, and the like.
I mean, it's something that you probably would have to develop a couple of years' worth of data to be able to do some comparison, and like you say, maybe have to throw out the first month or two of data.
Well, at least that, you know, some of them. One of the other really neat things about, you know, this process is that, you know, administrators can maintain an alert and keep it in what's called open status, or they can place it in what's called closed status. Those that they identify as fraudulent or just kind of games, they can close those pretty immediately and not have those kind of tie up the system.
Okay, and can, can they flag it as a species, as a game, or whatever the term you want to use for it?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you for doing the work and looking into this. I think it's a really positive step that we're taking in terms of kind of quantifying the experience that our students are having and giving them the ability to report things they might not otherwise have felt comfortable. So thank you for taking it on.
My pleasure. Thank Dr. Haas for assigning me to it. Any more questions about anonymous alerts?
On we go.
All right. So the next thing Dr. Haas asked me to speak to just briefly, if I could, is the, the issue of vaping and the use of e-cigarettes, both in our schools and across the country. One of the things that we would note is that this is a, a really serious issue for us and one that we know is going to require a good deal of work going forward for us as a division and frankly for the nation as a whole. E-cigarettes are the most commonly used tobacco products among U.S. middle and high school students. And when I say e-cigarettes, I am lumping together a really broad range of products, including e-cigarettes, vaporizing products, and, and the like. As you'll note here, of the 27% of students who noted that they have used any tobacco product, a full 20% of them suggest that they have used e-cigarettes, and that more than doubles any of the other categories that, that were included there. This next slide speaks to, provides information from what's called the National Youth Tobacco Survey, and that is a survey that is done nationwide to speak to young folks about their use of tobacco products. And what this slide reflects is that among those students who have reported that they are using tobacco products, you'll note that 25% this year, first of all, you'll note that the number of students who are using traditional cigarettes is in what looks like a pretty steady decline, and the number of students who are using e-cigarettes is certainly growing. And so the divide between students who are using those two types of products is growing. The next slide reflects some of the data from our particular school division, all right? And what you'll see there is some reporting about vape use by students in our schools, vape possession, and vape sale and distribution. It should be noted that this information reflects, because we're certainly still going on in the year 2018, 19, only reflects the behavioral referrals that were recorded through mid-year of each of those years. But one of the things that I would note is that it looks pretty clearly like we had a bit of a surge in use or a high point last school year, and that use is receding a bit this year. But one thing that I think is really critical to note is that we, we know just without a doubt that we are only identifying a very small percentage of our students who are using this kind of technology, and certainly a small percentage of those students who are possessing it. In fact, what we know is, we usually are only able to identify students who are using or possessing these kinds of materials when they have been involved in another kind of activity that might lead us to an opportunity to conduct an appropriate and lawful search of those students. At that time, you might find one of these particular items. And one might wonder, you know, why is that the case? This is an example. This will help you understand why, why that's the case. What you see there are three different kinds of e-cigarettes or vapes. The first is the one that we hear a whole lot about and that has been really a real issue for us. It is the, the famous jewel. As you can see, it looks exactly like what we call a jump drive, of course, a, a data unit that many of our students use in schools. And so it is very reasonable to expect that a staff member would see that and not expect that it was a jewel at all. It would expect that it was, you know, a student doing exactly what they were supposed to be doing. You can also imagine how easy it is to conceal that kind of item. Pictured with it are what are called jewel pods. Those involve the, the juice or the liquid that students actually use when they use these items. The, one of the really challenging things about those things is that they are refillable, right? And so a student can use one up, and actually a person, and we have found students who are doing it can actually sell a student a refill of a jewel pod, right? And what we know is that those jewel pods tend to carry the amount of nicotine and then the equivalent of somewhere between five and 20 cigarettes in each one of those little pods. In the middle, you have what's called a wax vape pen, and as you can see, looks just like a writing pen. There's no reason that anybody looking at that would think it was anything other than a regular writing utensil. And on the, on the far right, I just included a, a picture of my key fob for my car. Actually, that is a jewel as well. It is a, is what's called a fob vape, right? We've actually found a couple of students over the last couple of years who have had these kinds of vapes in our school. And as you can see, it is identical to the key fob that you probably have in your pocket. And again, no reason that any individual walking by seeing something like that would know or believe it to be anything other than a regular key fob that one would use on their particular car. So last year, in our first attempt to really address this as an issue, we developed in partnership with our colleagues at Region 10, a community, a communique that we shared across the division, where we shared some information with our families about e-cigarettes and the use of these items. And we, we found a number of conclusions that were developed by the National Academies of Sciences, Engineering, and Medicine, and we shared these with our community. Of note, and what's most important, I think, for us to understand and help continue to share with our community is, there is a, a notion out there that e-cigarettes are, are better for people and for, particularly for young people than our traditional cigarettes. We know that there is no research out there right now that, that solidifies or supports that notion. It is a misconception. Many people think that e-cigarettes are less damaging because the amount of nicotine that you receive from them is not comparable to that of a cigarette. We know that that is not true at this point. And one of the things that we know that is most important, I think, is that use of e-cigarettes or jewels by, or vapes by young people actually increases the likelihood that over the course of their life, they will actually turn to and become addicted to traditional cigarettes. And so it's really important that we continue to share information with our community about these items. And so that leads me to our final slide, which is exciting to share with you. Some years ago, this community benefited from what was known as the Tobacco-Free Community Coalition. It was a coalition of groups across our community that focused on the idea of eradicating the use of cigarettes in our schools by youth. The good news about the work that that group did, did is that they were largely successful in that work. And, you know, one of the things I was sharing with Dr. Haas yesterday is, for the most part, we have eradicated the use of cigarettes in our schools by, by young people, for the most part. Well, once that group met with the success that it did, it, it kind of went away after a couple of years of activity. Fortunately for us, just in the last two months, that school has been, that, that program, that coalition, has been reconstituted. And this time, we will be working and focusing on trying to eradicate the use of e-cigarettes and vaping products in our school. That group will begin its work on May 14, 2019, at Charlesville High School, where we will have a community town hall focused on vaping and jeweling. When we started our work, one of the things that we decided as a coalition was that we wanted to start this work by listening to the concerns of the community, rather than walking in and starting the process by telling the community what needed to happen for them. We want to start by listening. So, so we would certainly hope that any of the board members who are available on that evening would come up and join us for that activity. We will be listening to the community, and again, that, that coalition right now, it consists of the Albemarle County Public Schools, Region 10, Charlesville City Schools, and Couple of additional things to, just to add, you know, it is important to note that the Commonwealth of Virginia did just pass new legislation that pushes up the age for buying tobacco products to 21. We think that's going to be particularly useful in this fight, as, you know, the pushing up of the age to purchase cigarettes to 18, when that happened, we believe had a pretty significant impact on the fight against youth cigarette use. So we're excited about that, and we feel like it's going to be an op, an opportunity to help us in focusing on this work. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have about either of these issues.
Dr. King, at the, at the moment, I mean, you know, one of the things I think about when, when people say that... people say that there's no proof of the danger of these, I think back into the 1960s, and I was aware of it in the 1950s, because everybody in my family smoked.
Right.
And there was a magazine ad recommending Camel nonfilters to pregnant women, because it was good for them. The lack of knowledge is incredible, and the word of mouth of stuff like that, you know, is extremely dangerous. Do we have anything in our health or Health II classes that talks about this?
So I think that the issue is addressed in a very kind of basic and rudimentary way at this point. But one of the real exciting things about the work of this coalition is that this coalition is, one of the things that we know the coalition has to bring to bear is really a wealth of information that can be infused into our health curriculum. And that's one of the things that even at the very beginning of this process, the coalition has offered as one of the things that it will be able to provide to the community. So my answer to that would be, I think we address it in a very, very basic way, certainly not as aggressively as it probably needs to be addressed, but I'm excited that we have a source of information that we'll be able to use for that purpose going forward.
One of our public speakers today was a student at Monticello, and she was saying that her research showed that health teachers felt like they didn't have enough time to cover, she was talking about drugs and alcohol, but I'm sure cigarettes fits in that category too. So that may be something we need to look at.
Absolutely.
And how difficult is it to refill the pods?
It takes a few seconds. Takes a few seconds. Really nothing to it. I've never seen one, but I've had one described to me. It's a little bottle with a spout on it, and you literally connect the two spouts and squeeze the juice into the pod, and you're done. So, no time at all.
I had one, and I had to find out how to use it.
Do we have any, I mean, I mean, it would only be anecdotal data, but I know I met with Jesse Turner when, maybe it was last year, he had a basket full of Juuls that he had confiscated. Do we have any, just even that level of numbers of how many our principals confiscate?
Not that we've collected or that I've seen, you know, but my sense is that they're, you know.
They're everywhere.
They're everywhere. And what's really important to remember, I did a hearing a couple of weeks ago, and a parent was, you know, was around this. And the parent was insistent that their child could not have been using a vape, because she knew what a vape looked like. She had another child who had one, and there was no way the child had one at her home. But she was thinking about kind of the first generation of these things that are, you know, big and have the long spouts. Well, we showed her some of the images here of what these things might look like today, and that certainly changed the conversation. So, you know, I say that to say, while certainly, I know our principals have confiscated many of them, their availability in our community is just incredible. They are just wildly available. It's pretty clear that manufacturers are now manufacturing them for the specific purpose of concealment, and, you know, it's a really difficult challenge for us. I've had principals tell me that they were certain that they've been in bathrooms when students were actually using vapes, and it's just that difficult to figure out what's going on.
Can you buy these, this equipment at any place you buys a package of cigarettes, or do you have to go to a different? I mean, I know they're not cheap. They're like 30 bucks or something for...
So they're 30 bucks, for instance, a Juul is about 30 bucks to initially buy, but once you own a Juul, all you need from that point forward are the pods, so you can re-up with the pods. They are available in local stores. If, as you drive around Charlottesville, there are a couple of specific vape shops. And of course, if you go online, you will find that you can find them anywhere. Their availability online is really significant.
For that 1.1% using pipe tobacco. Stop reading, I'm Sherlock Holmes. I didn't know that was still a thing.
I'll work on it.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Dr. King.
Yes, sir.
Very much.
Thank you.
I know we've only got one and a half more sections to go, but I'd like to take a 10-minute break. We start again at 20 after, according to that clock.
Our next presentation is tackling the student stress dilemma. Dr. McLaughlin.
Good evening, Board members. I'm Pat McLaughlin, Chief of Strategic Planning, and I'm here to talk with you tonight about some ideas we have for elevating the high school experience by working to mitigate the academic stressors our high school students face. In the report that's included in your board packet, tackling the student stress dilemma by our partners at EAB, shows that national trends in teen mental health tell a rather troubling story. As you can see here, incidents of major depressive episodes have risen to 17.3% in girls and 5.7% in boys. Minors requiring hospitalization for eating disorders rose 172% between 2003 and 2014. 25% of teens meet the criteria for an anxiety disorder, and 8% of children ages 7 to 16 have attempted some type of self-injury. High levels of stress tend to manifest itself in a number of different ways in our students. These include poor physical health, substance misuse and abuse, academic misconduct such as copying homework or plagiarizing papers, and maladaptive behaviors such as the fear of taking on new challenges. Many factors that have an impact on high levels of student stress are external to our locus of control in schools. These include parenting styles that create failure-averse kids. We used to talk about the helicopter parents who are always hovering over their students. A new moniker we begin to hear is the lawnmower parent, who mow down every obstacle in their kid's path so they never experience the challenges of failure, struggle, or learn lessons from them. We also see that colleges are becoming increasingly selective, which leads to a catch-22 in the admissions process. From 1990 to 2016, the percentage of students who are applying to seven or more colleges grew from 9% of students to 29% of students. When this happens, admissions rates drop to even smaller percentages, and kids feel like they have to apply to even more schools to have a chance to gain admission. And we also see that our kids are constantly connected via social media. Because of this, there's little time for the mental breaks from social pressers that normally existed before the age of cell phones and constant connectivity. We see that heavy users of social media are nearly three times as likely to suffer from depression versus non-heavy users. And while these factors are outside of our control, there are some factors we can impact at the school level, and the board has consistently kept student health and well-being as a top priority for our kids. This is clearly reflected in this year's funding request through initiatives such as ensuring all elementary schools have a full-time counselor, increasing the middle school support counselors, expanding the STEP program, and introducing the anonymous reporting app, which we heard about from Dr. King just a few moments ago. We know that additional sources of stress for many of our kids come from academics and the pressure to be high achievers. Our colleagues at EAB sum this up well in the report on tackling the student stress dilemma when they say "students" in a relentless pursuit of perfection, concerned about getting the highest grades in the toughest possible classes to get admitted to the most selective colleges, have little interest in learning or their own growth beyond building the perfect college resume. This academic stress is evident in our students in a number of ways. In May 2017, as part of a survey on the newly implemented homework policy, ACPS high school students were asked about stress and mental health. Of the nearly 1,200 responses received that year, 68 indicated that their amount of worry about schoolwork had increased, 72% reported a decrease in the amount of sleep they get, 66% indicated that they had less time to do things other than schoolwork, and 64% reported a decreased amount of time to spend with family and friends. We recently closed a similar survey on homework with our students in grades 4 through 12, and will be sharing the results with the board in the near future. In February of 2018, we asked our students how our current practice of weighting grades impacted them. Over 2,000 students completed the survey, with 49% of respondents indicating that the practice of weighting grades increases student stress levels, 68% indicated that weighting grades motivates students to take as many advanced placement courses as possible, and 54% indicated that weighting grades discourages kids from taking unweighted elective courses that were of interest to them. Additionally, 70% of our respondents indicated that they think the practice of weighting grades gives them a better chance of getting into the college of their choice. We know that AP courses also have been identified as a source of stress for students, particularly as they relate to the belief that the more AP courses in which students enroll, the higher their probability of gaining admission to a selective college or university. AP enrollment is indicative of this trend. In the 2017-2018 school year, 54 11th-grade students and 158 12th-grade students were enrolled concurrently in five or more AP classes. The number of juniors or seniors enrolled in three or more AP classes concurrently that same year was 253 and 359 respectively. In the 2018-19 school year, we have 28 different AP offerings for our kids to choose from. One benefit of the AP program that's touted by the College Board is stronger preparation for the level of rigor that students will experience when they get to the college level. In a survey given to our ACPS stakeholders in February 2018, participants were asked how many AP courses they believed students needed to complete throughout their high school career to demonstrate that they could do rigorous college-level work. Nearly 87% indicated that students should take between zero and six courses to show this capability. The most commonly selected response from participants, just over 40%, was between one and three courses. We see that we've got many students who hit or surpass those numbers within one year. Finally, we see that 42% of our high school students are currently enrolled in a study hall. Students have told us that there are a couple of reasons for this. The first is that they are taking a study hall instead of an unweighted elective class because taking an unweighted class, even if they do well, will lower their overall GPA. They also tell us that because of their workload, they need time during the school day to get away from academic pressure and get outside work done for their classes. So with all of this in mind, we began looking for ways in which we might adopt policies and procedures that would mitigate academic stressors for our kids. During Dr. Haas's listening tour, it was clear that our teachers wanted to have a voice in those conversations from the beginning, so we took the problem to them. We held six open meetings in April and January and in April, and used the feedback and ideas we heard to put together this proposal. You're all familiar with our three strategic priorities. We believe that we've identified multiple practices that are currently in place in our division that are barriers to the attainment of these priorities. It's our duty as a school system to eliminate such barriers when they become apparent to us. So tonight's purpose is to inform the board about some work that is currently underway to address these issues and to present ideas for feedback from the board and to get potential board endorsement at a later meeting. Each of you, Jennifer Johnson's passing out some note catchers to each of you. Each page has one of the four proposals that are there. We're hoping you can use these as you listen to what we have to say tonight to jot down what you like about what you hear, how you might improve what you hear, and any questions that you would like to have answers to as we consider some of these ideas. Everybody got one? All right. So the first of our four proposals tonight is to better monitor our fidelity to the Division homework policy. Homework is reported to be a significant stressor to our kids, and we also hear from them that while our policy is a good one, the reality is that it's not always adhered to. This is something we're already addressing. As I mentioned earlier, we have recently conducted a survey of our current student experience with homework. We're also in the process of forming a student-led team to develop regulations and best-practice ideas for how we might ensure stronger fidelity to our policy. I've met with students from Western Admiral High School who are interested in this work, and will soon meet with students in our other high schools to form a team to work on developing regulations by the end of the next school year. One of the first suggestions to come out of this group was to develop a mechanism by which teachers have an easy understanding of the competing priorities students face across all of their classes, not just for the class that teacher has them for. We're pleased to say that we've been thinking about this too, and Jay Thomas, our Director of Secondary Education, can tell you a bit about how our new learning management system, SchoolAGI, can help support this.
Good evening. As you guys know, we'll be implementing a new learning management system next year called SchoolAGI, and one of the things we heard loud and clear from the kids for the last several years is the amount of work they have has been overwhelming, and you can see for a number of the reasons why. There's two options within the SchoolAGI LMS that we have that's wonderful, I think, that could really help open up conversations and allow teachers to see the loads on the students. The first one is that one of our minimum expectations as we roll this out next year is that teachers use the calendar aspect within SchoolAGI, all teachers. And what that means is it's twofold. One, there's something called the class calendar. So we'll expect the teachers to put any of their homework assignments into the class calendar so that the kids can see what they have to do for each class. The teachers then, and again, that's one-stop shopping for the kids, they go to one site and see the requirements for all of their classes versus having to go to Blackboard for this, or Google for that, or email for this, so it'd be one-stop shopping for the kids. Another powerful piece of it is something called the workload planner. And what the teachers can do, the teacher, if the teacher has 120 kids in their English class over, you know, the six class periods, they can go in and they can see each of their individual kids and all the assignments that are assigned to that individual teacher, that child, by all that child's teachers. So they can see, hey, I was gonna do, I would like to do a test on next Friday, and they look in there and see the kid already has three tests from three other subjects, you know, maybe they can have a conversation and try to figure out how to not add a fourth test to the child. Or we can start seeing trends in the amount of homework that is given and the types of homework and activities that the kids are doing. So this is something we've heard pretty loud and clear from kids and parents for a while, and I think it'll be a big benefit in helping us to continue to have conversations and increase opportunities for us to reduce the amount of stress for our kids in ways that we can handle in the classroom.
Thanks, Jay. So if we're successful with this, we would expect to see an increased percentage of kids reporting that teachers adhere to the policy. We would expect to see students reporting adequate time for sleep and activities outside of school, and students reporting manageable stress levels. One of the things we heard from teachers around this when we were pitching it out to them was that we need some PD support here. When we asked teachers about their homework practices back in 2017, almost to a T, they said, yes, I believe the assignments I give fall within the parameters of the homework policy that are there. And so there's certainly no malicious intent by our staff to overload kids with homework, but I think we need to do some work around how we figure out, you know, how we monitor how much homework kids are doing and whether our assignments actually are falling within those parameters. They also said this looks like a good opportunity to help kids develop time management skills. We know that's one of the really crucial pieces that they need as they leave us and head off to college. So our second proposal is to eliminate weighted grades. Students have reported to us that the practice of weighting grades makes them less likely to select an unweighted course of personal interest since unweighted grades have a negative impact on a weighted GPA. Weighted grades, therefore, are a barrier to achieving the Admiral County School Board's strategic priority to ensure that kids identify and develop their personal interests. As you may recall, in Virginia, AP and international baccalaureate classes are required by regulatory code to be weighted. In January 2018, the Virginia Board of Education voted unanimously to grant Admiral County a five-year waiver to this regulation, allowing us to study and move forward with the decision to remove weights from grades if we so choose. Our timeframe for this would be to start with our current 7th-grade students, as they are the least likely to have any courses with weighted grades. Many of them may have had Algebra I, but other than that, they probably haven't had an opportunity for weighted grades. If this is successful, we would expect to see a reduction in study hall enrollment and an increase in students reporting that they're enrolling in classes because of their personal interest in those classes. It's important to note that we were asked to research the potential impacts this would have on students as they applied to institutions of higher education. We commissioned a study through EAB to look at these other issues, and their report is included in your board packet. The report indicates that removing grade weights will not have a significant impact on our students' ability to gain admission into colleges. The feedback we received about this indicated strong support for the move and actually a desire to move the timeframe up. So if the proposal moves forward, we will form an implementation team during the 2019-20 school year to determine if the 7th-grade cohort is the best starting point for this change in practice. Our third proposal is that we study the idea of moving to seven academic periods for students while also implementing an enrichment block in our high schools. So kids would still have an eight-period day, generally spread across two days in the block schedule. Seven of those courses would be academic courses, one period would be an enrichment period. Our rationale for this includes the number of credits that are required to graduate in Virginia. They're either 22 or 26. We currently offer a minimum of 32 opportunities for our students in high school, exclusive of credits they can earn in middle school. Students can earn three, sometimes four, credits before they even walk into their high school. Survey data from kids indicates their preference for seven courses versus eight, as well as a desire for dedicated time during the school day for collaboration, enrichment, and intervention. Kids said when we're doing a lot of things like project-based learning and we've gotta work in groups, how can we find time during the day to be able to get that work done and not have that be an additional burden on us outside of school? We also see that currently 42% of our kids enroll in a study hall. So nearly half of our kids are self-selecting a seven-course academic day to begin with. So our timeframe on this would be to work on a common high school bell schedule for the 2019-2020 school year, and Jay Thomas can come up and talk a little bit about that because that work is well underway.
So the high school principals have been working with their staffs this year, talking to them about their current daily schedule and what opportunities we have in that. One of the things we've challenged each other with is stopping to look at us as having three comprehensive high schools, Murray, K-Tech, and now a center, and look at our high schools as one group of students, 4,300 students, and we have lots of different places they can go and opportunities, and not be limited by the school and the zone that you live in. So the principals have worked with their teachers and their staffs this year, and it's generated some comments and feedbacks about what a daily schedule, common schedule division-wide would look like. They had representatives from their schools that I actually worked with, and we had several meetings, half-day, full-day meetings, talking about what opportunities would lie within a common daily schedule, and they've got a proposal put together now that they are taking back to their staffs, and two of the three principals have already reported back to me that the teachers completely understand the rationale behind why they're going to it and see the opportunities for not only kids but for the staffs. And what that would look like is if we use A-Day and B-Day, is you have four classes on A-Day, four classes on B-Day, that they would have those opportunities, those would be the same division-wide. What they do within the bell schedule on a daily basis is still up to the schools to individualize and do, but this would allow a student to be able to go to, let's say, Western Admiral High School on A-Day, and then be able to go over to Monticello High School and be in the ROTC program on B-Day, and take some classes over there as well, and go back and forth, and still be a Western Admiral High School student and be in the Western feeder pattern. It'd allow teachers to easier access to go back and forth and be able to teach at different buildings and things like that, and so we've gotten a lot of good feedback on that, and we're pretty close to finalizing a proposal for that as well.
Thanks, Jay. And Jay reminded me my semantics were wrong on this, that we'll have a common daily schedule, not necessarily a common bell schedule where all the bells ring at the exact same time in all four of our schools. So thanks for the correction there. Jay's always keeping me on track. So that will be in place as early as next year, and we would use next year to study the move to seven academic periods because that has a potential fiscal impact that we would need to look into. If we studied next year, we might be able to implement as soon as 2020, 2021 school year, which would coincide nicely with our 7th-grade cohort model. That would be the first year 7th graders are in high school, and so then all at the same time, they would be in there with elimination of weighted grades in the common, I'm sorry, the seven-period day with the enrichment period. As part of this plan, our freshman seminar course would be integrated into that enrichment period, so kids would have seven courses to choose from, and we would work to find a way to integrate that seminar in there. Our expected impact would be a reduction in study hall enrollment and a reported decrease in student stress levels, and again, this received strong overall support when we presented it to teachers in the division. And our final proposal that we've got tonight is to limit the number of AP courses students may take during the four years in high school. With nearly 40% nationwide participation rate, the significance of advanced placement as a mark of academic noteworthyness has diminished since the 1950s, when the program first began. We also see that many of our students are overloading AP courses and taking them as a means to college admissions, not because of a passion for the subject. There's also a suggestion of a causal link between achievement pressure and some negative behaviors that we see in teenagers. Our initial proposal for an implementation plan would again begin with our current 7th-grade cohort of students, and we would have students take no AP courses in the 9th grade, a maximum of one in their 10th grade year, two in their 11th grade year, and three in their 12th grade year. If this proposal moves forward, an implementation team would plan during the 2019-20 school year and have regulations in place for 2020, 2021. Our expected impacts from this would be an increase in students reporting choice, course choice was based on personal interests, a reduction in reported student stress levels, and a reported increase in time for activities outside of school. The feedback we received was supportive. It encouraged us to move faster and asked us to consider dual enrollment courses as well. These would all be items that the implementation team would consider and advise us on. The impacts of limiting AP courses was another topic we asked EAB to conduct research on. They found that the limit on APs would not disadvantage our students as long as we clearly communicate this practice in our school profiles, and so long as we don't allow exceptions to the limits. So there's quite a few ideas on the table that we feel are in the best interests of our kids. This timeline attempts to show you how our proposed planning and implementation stages of all of those ideas, many of which would be kind of in a study mode during the 1920 school year, with implementation coming in 2021. In addition to these proposals, feedback we received from teachers suggested that we consider the impacts of athletics and extracurricular activities on student stress levels as well. That wasn't something I personally had thought of, but I think it may be worthy of consideration. And also address non-academic stressors, which again, I think the board is doing some pretty significant work around already. I think both of those items will warrant future consideration. So tonight, we'd like to hear your initial feedback on these ideas and questions that you feel need to be answered before we bring this back to the board sometime in the future.
Patrick, maybe I missed it. I know you surveyed teachers and students. What about, I mean, what about the parents? I would anticipate you would have to do a very sophisticated communication campaign with parents to let them know what we're doing and why we're doing it, and you'd get some pushback.
Agreed. When you look at like the AP numbers, that had significant parent input on that survey. Some of these surveys have been disaggregated to look at specific groups and what they've told us. If you go to our Division Survey Results page, you can see all of the different groups by group, and you can see the results of those surveys aggregated together as well.
When we're talking about this enrichment period, would that be the same period for all students?
So I think that's one of the details that would get worked out.
Just because that would allow kids to do club activities, and so that's something to think about. I think if we make this change with a class of 2024, it's important for us to notify college admissions of colleges that we send a lot of students that, oh, our 2024 class is gonna look a lot different than others so that they won't see, oh, he only took six AP in Alamo, he could take 12.
That's right, and that, Steve, was one of the recommendations that EAB heard from college admissions officers too when they contacted them. And so each year, each of our high schools builds what we call a school profile that college admissions officers look at to see what is our most rigorous program that we have here in the school. And so when that comes along, a strong communication effort would need to be made. In fact, they suggested personal outreach to the admissions officers that we have relationships with so they understand the changes that were made.
Okay, and when we implement this change on the weighted grades, we may need to clarify with the state board, you gave us a five-year window, but we're actually gonna want to do it in this window. I don't think they'd have a problem with making it, but I think we should notify them that we've made that change.
Yes, and we had, when we went to the board, we made a commitment to them to come back at some time and let them know how things were going because they were pretty excited about the ideas that we put out there. And I think this has the potential to get the board to consider removing that weight regulation from AP and IP classes statewide. And what an experience that would be for our Western Albemarle students who really went before the board and did that if they had an impact like that on hundreds of thousands of students.
Okay. And the only thing that I would kind of disagree with is I guess I feel like one AP as a freshman might be appropriate. So I don't know. I'm very supportive of the caps on APs, but I might end up with, say, going to 7, 1, 1, 2, 3 rather than 0, 1, 2, 3.
Yeah. And again, we could have the...
I mean, and I'm sure you need to study it, but I just...
Yeah. Currently, only one of our high schools, I believe, allows ninth graders to take APs at Monticello High School. There are no ninth-grade AP classes at Albemarle or Western. So that wouldn't be a huge change in practice for us. But again, I think there's a lot of details that would need to be worked out to say, are those the right numbers? One of the questions that came up said, well, if I didn't take an AP in 10th grade, could I take three when I'm an 11th grader? And so issues like that are going to arise, and that's why we need some time to study exactly how we'd implement.
Yeah. And in one sense, I feel like we're going awfully slow, but I think it's probably better to go right and go slow. So I'm very pleased with all these suggestions.
I'd like more details on how you plan on counting the classes that the kid would be in because of their interests rather than having it go toward their GPA.
I am too.
Yeah.
And I think that's a question we could ask through a survey. If you are in AP classes, why did you take the AP classes that you're in? Or if you're in this... I think we've got to figure out that, too. That's probably the one piece that we don't currently have a great survey question on, but a lot of anecdotal reports from kids who are telling us, this is the reason I'm taking the study hall and not taking this class. This is the reason I'm taking this number of AP classes instead of something else.
Next year would be a good year to do some baseline survey.
Absolutely.
Because you could just ask students, in the classes you took this year, did you take them because of personal choice or did you take them because... Like give them reasons why they took them.
Yep.
So I like the way you framed up the outcome so that you could develop questions for the students.
And when we go to four classes, will each class period be 90 minutes or will it sort of vary?
So that's basically what our high schools do now, four classes a day and then a different set of four classes on the next day.
Right.
And so the classes are around, I think, 85 minutes generally in those.
Yeah. Obviously, when there's snow days or other days, other things interfere with the school day, division-wide, we decide whether it was an A-Day or a B-Day going forward.
That's right. And that would be a change in practice for us, but it would help us maintain consistency and avoid missing one-day disproportionate number of times.
Other questions?
On the issue of homework policy, you talked about having a school-wide calendar so teachers can check on not only the... Well, even for particular students. What about across schools? I mean, do we see a different homework load at Western Albemarle as compared with Monticello? Do we have any mechanism to check on that? I don't know if...
So we just wrapped a second homework survey just a couple of days ago. We're starting to disaggregate that data. I've seen it collectively as high schools. I haven't seen it for each individual school. But we will be breaking that out, and we'll be sharing that with the high school principals to have them consider what their takeaways be from what kids are telling them.
I mean, and this is just a methodological issue that probably doesn't make any difference, but one of our outcome measures for each of these interventions is a reduction in student stress, and we're implementing them all at the same time. So I guess we globally want them to have a reduction in stress, so it may not matter if it was the homework or the AP, but we have the same metric for each of them.
I agree. And when we think about systems, we don't know if any one thing is going to make the impact, but we think collectively, these might have a significant impact on... And again, we've got to remember, this is academic stressors. There's a whole lot of other stressors that are out there for kids that can cause them anxiety, that can cause them to feel uncomfortable. And we've got other ways that we're going after addressing those. And again, I think the board has always been clear in its budget priorities and in other ways that that's a top priority for us as a division.
It's a pretty sophisticated set of initiatives. So good work.
Well, and I think we'd be trailblazers in a number of ways on this. When we look to see how many other public school divisions put a cap on AP, it was very hard to find any. I'm not sure we were successful in finding any that do that. So we'd be the pioneers in this.
I do think that there are many school divisions around the state that want to do this kind of work because we're facing two pressures right now, right? We want to have students that are more prepared for entering the workplace and developing workplace skills, and yet we still have the system that is built around academics and academic objectives. So I think that there are divisions around the state watching and waiting for a school system to take the first step. And when we went to talk to the school board at the Virginia Department of Education level, we were the only school system that had come forward with any proposals independently that were based on high school, their profile of a graduate. So I do think, I certainly like Steve's suggestion of reaching back out to them to say, hey, we haven't used up our eligibility yet. So we want credit for the two years. We did tell them at that time, they said, you realize we're not approving this for your school system, right? Because they wanted to be clear that we had to do the work at the local level to build support in the community for what we wanted to do. So that was our piece, too. We wanted to get it settled at the state level and then do the work that we need to do here and make sure everybody understood we were working on that.
And one thing I neglected to mention is we did bring this to the Albemarle Parent Council at their meeting in April and gave a very similar presentation to what you saw here tonight, and in support was very strong from that group. Granted, a small sample size, but some pretty involved parents who I think are going to be rather relieved if we can take some of this pressure off their kids.
Some mixed comments. And Matt, one of them, to what you were just saying, is this is focused on our college-bound kids, which is about 65% of our kids. And at the same time, one of the things I really like about it is to have the focus on giving every kid the ability to take more courses that they're interested in, which is one of our guidelines, and that they have passions in. And I appreciate Jake correcting you on the high school bell schedule because I was going to ask from a K-Tech point of view, if Charlottesville is working on this same kind of thing. And I mean, I think that Matt and I saw the deputy superintendent, who was not saying one about the concept that they're going to do that, but I was just wondering if through your communications you could have some input for that.
Yeah. I'm interested to hear what Jay has to say.
Yeah.
So Daphne's done a great job over at K-Tech, bringing both groups together and looking at the pros and cons of whether K-Tech went to a similar schedule as us or stayed the way they are. So they're going to be talking to their joint board here in the next week or two when you guys meet and kind of continue those conversations. So one of the things they were leaning toward at our last meeting is keeping it the way it is right now and then start to look at how can they build out opportunities for kids within their program that if they wanted to stay longer, they can, and if they wanted to do half-day, they can. But we can still make the half-day work in our schools, and I'll give you two examples. We have two different kids over at Center One now that are in their base school, half-day at K-Tech, half-day at Center One, and still getting experiences they need. So it's just creative planning. And it's almost really looking at that master schedule, not as Westerns or Albemars, so on and so forth. It's division-wide, and that's one of the benefits when we get to that common A-B day in addition to what you were saying, Steve saying, it's a snow day. Now, we'll build out protocols on when do we decide if we're going to flip a flex day that we have into an A or a B day to keep that consistency of the A and B days throughout. So there's a lot of opportunities. I think a lot of neat things that'll end up popping up as we kind of go through with this. So K-Tech is getting feedback from both of the school systems right now, be presenting to their joint board here in a week or so. We can make either way work as we go into next year.
I think there are going to be some other complexities that come up in it, too, is that with the different school schedules or bell schedules or whatever, the good news is that at K-Tech, there can be more flexibility.
Yes.
And at Center One, there can be more flexibilities. And when we get into Center Two, then I think there's just going to add one more level in there. And hopefully by that time, we'll have a lot of this figured out.
Yeah.
And have some uniformity in there. But I think that the Center maybe have some more flexibility as they move forward.
Yeah. As a board, I mean, if you think about it, you've been building in the pieces a little bit at a time along the way, putting in the transportation across the county. The next piece, I think that's one of the most important things, is changing the way we admit students into the academies so that once we have greater access to them, meaning students can take different ways of transportation to get there, the schedules will be aligned, we need to let go of some of the stringent requirements, probably all the stringent requirements that we have other than student interest in attending a particular academy. Let's not be gatekeepers of students' interests. We want to increase the diversity in these programs, and we want to offer programs that all of our students are interested in doing. I really want to take an opportunity to commend Jay and Patrick both because the way that they've gone about this has been to put non-negotiables out there as proposals and then let the school staff do the problem solving, come up with solutions to the ideas and problems that we might be facing. It's been many times now, at least three times since I've been in the county, where we've tried to move the high schools to the same schedule and it just hasn't worked. Didn't even have agreement to start, and we would start anyway. But you've been handling this very, very well, and I think that this, knock on wood, this may be the time when we're able to do it because you involve them in the problem solving and you're very patient. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Just to give feedback.
Did you write our homework?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just to give feedback. I think this is, basically, all of them are great, so thank you for taking the effort and time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Jennifer, if you could collect the note catchers before the end of the night tonight, we'll take a look at those as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. Thanks, Jay. Thank you, Mr. Pearlman, for attending. I see you back there.
Okay. Our final segment is for the school board salary advertisement. And I don't know who is... That's us. Oh, good. Okay. Typically, what has happened in the past is with superintendents, and this happens in the supervisors and school board members, is that there's an advertisement for a pay increase every year that is at the same level as the classified staff. Yet this year, that number would be 2.3%. And so I think we tonight should decide if we want to move forward with that. And so I throw that open for discussion before we look at taking a vote on it.
I move that we direct the board clerk to advertise for a public hearing a school board member's salary of $6,907 with a chairman stipend of $1,800 and a vice chairman stipend of $35 per meeting chaired.
Any conversation or discussion?
I just need some clarification. Sorry.
Sure.
So this is to have Jennifer advertise for public hearings?
Right. And then we actually move to do it after the public hearing.
Okay. So this is to get feedback?
Right.
It allows the public to...
Come in and agree.
I'm going to vote no, as I always do, because I'm a public servant and therefore I do not wish to have an increase in salary, and therefore I'm voting no to stop the advertisement.
I guess that's what my question is, but this isn't a vote on whether we want to do the raise or not.
Correct.
Just for the public hearing.
Yep.
Okay.
And in theory, I guess, even if we don't have a change, we have to advertise it? So if we were going to leave it where it was, we'd have to... But we could always probably do lower than... Okay. Anyway, I've always supported this because I think it provides the opportunity for peoples of limited means who might not be able to serve because they have to work a second job to be able to serve on the school board. So that's one of the reasons why I've always believed it. Plus, I also think that it's helped me take my job more seriously that I get paid for it.
Any other discussion? We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Okay. The motion passes. Jennifer, would you please do that advertisement? Thank you.
And I'm still confused. When it comes up again, we'll have a chance. Like Steve, it seemed like you were giving discussion about why you'd want to raise or not want to raise. That is a vote that's going to be in the future.
Right.
Personally, I'm not in favor of a raise, but a public hearing.
Okay. Then I hope you'll vote no when the vote time comes.
Yeah.
Very good. If there is no other business, is there any...
We don't have a closed meeting?
Yeah, I'm just going to get to that.
Okay.
And Mr. Page?
I move that Albemarle County Public School Board go into a closed meeting as authorized by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2-2, 3711A of the Code of Virginia, under subsection 3 for discussion and consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, and 2, subsection 8 for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the school board regarding specifically legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in closed session.